That's cool. Good evening, welcome to the March eighteenth meeting of Joint Boards Meeting of the Library Trustees and the permanent town Building Committee. While we have an agenda posted, we actually are taking some things out of order tonight. So I think first, Ellen, we want to do the approval of. Let's go, we need to call tenants first, so Buffy, work your magic.
All right. Dirks, I are here. Fleckner?
I.
Roach not here. Secor?
Here.
Siegel not here. Teal not here. Cook?
Yeah.
Isleton?
Here.
Kerpinske?
Here.
Patton?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wimberg not here. Zegowitz not here. Then Berlinski and Perkins not here. Leadburg?
Here.
Rainville?
Here.
Lass?
Here.
Goodwin?
Here.
And McCorry?
Here.
And that's it? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. We actually have no minutes to approve, so one and two are behind us. Ellen, do you want to take the moving first or?
Why don't we do the proposals which are simple? So we have a proposal from Sterling movers to retrieve, assemble, and install free shelving, which is currently at the Methuen Nevins Memorial Library. They have quoted $5,847. They have already installed some free shelving from Middlebury College for us at the temporary site. We also have a proposal from Delaney Antique Clocks to disassemble the Aaron Willard tall case clock so that it will be ready for packaging by the moving firm, and I will set up the time with them. As well, we have a journal entry. These are legal ads that we need to approve and that will be submitted as an entry against the library project budget instead of the town manager's budget. So all in all, these proposals and the journal entry equals $6,325.74.
And these are already in our budget?
Yes, yes, these are moving costs and legal costs, and they are within our budget.
Okay, so is there any discussion? It's no discussion, is there a motion to approve the proposals for $6,325 and $0.24 outlined in the agenda?
So moved.
I'll take that as a Chris motion and Nancy's second.
Thank you.
And I'll ask Buffy to call the roll.
All right, here's the voting. Dirks, I. Fleckner?
I.
Roach not here. Secor?
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just signed in like a minute ago.
Let's go Fleckner. You did. I.
I.
I. Secor?
I.
Siegel and Teal are not here. Cook?
I.
Isleton?
I.
Kerpinske?
I.
Patton?
I.
Roberts?
I.
Wimberg and Zegowitz are not here, so that is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 0, 0.
Okay, thank you. Next, what do you want next, Ellen?
We would like to do a report A number two, and I'll have Jennifer report on the bid results for the moving RFP, which is what we hope that this group will approve tonight for recommendation to the select boards meeting next Tuesday night.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. I want to summarize our bids for professional moving services. Again, this is the move out of your existing library, and then some material will go to your temporary library, and then some material will go to an offsite secure storage facility. And then this also includes moving in the material back into your existing library at the end of construction from the temporary library. This is moving, you know, books as well as furnishings and shelving pieces. And then the, also the moving of all the items that were within the temporary store, the rented storage facility back to the new library when it's, when the renovation is complete. All of that is included in this bid. We had fourteen companies that received the bid. We had five companies that attended the walk through. We received a total of four bids. Our estimated budget for this scope of work was $337,000. We had two bids that were under that value and two bids that were over. We've prepared a full leveling sheet, but in summary, Wakefield Moving and Storage was the, is the apparent low bidder. Their total cost is $180,000, $180,654, which is approximately $156,000 underneath our budget. And since we received those bids, we have confirmed that all of the material required to complete the bid is included, and we've also been checking references. We've received some really positive references. We were able to speak with, in particular, the library director from the town of Marblehead where they recently completed a similar move. And we have spoken with the leads of the team and to discuss the move process, and we're also have confirmed that they're prepared to start immediately. Our schedule right now is fairly short for needing to move material out of the library into the temporary library. So at this point in time, we would like to recommend that we engage Wakefield Moving and Storage for the professional moving services for the project for a value of $180,000, $180,654. Can, do you have any questions about that?
I guess, is it common that we get, that you get bids that far apart in value? I mean, if two are over, they're well over, you know, $3,000, so have it's maybe coming up about half? Is that, is that usual?
Um, well, we believe that in talking, trying to understand the spread of this, one of the reasons may be that the availability of the companies to achieve this and essentially if they're already aligned with a project because we're coming into some timing towards when other projects are moving. So this company has a really good window because they are also finishing up in the town of Marion, there is the Elizabeth Tabor Library, and they worked on that piece and it's just ending. So we think that this is reflecting, their bid is lower because it's reflecting really ideal timing for them for a job and staff that's available. But we did get four, the bids were essentially $180,000, $295,461,000, and $485,000. So it's a pretty widespread. But we have vetted them and asked through a whole series of questions on scope and price and confirming that they're using prevailing wage rates.
And they've got the right insurance as well?
They comply with the town's insurance requirements, yes.
Any other discussion?
I think that Glenn had a question. He has.
No, you answered it. Thank you. Anybody else? In the cases or?
Most of them had moved libraries. One of, one of the stipulations, which you may not remember, was they needed to have moved three libraries of 100,000 items or more in order to be eligible.
Okay, so I guess I think a motion to approve the expenditure of $180,000, so $186,54 to Wakefield Moving for the moving of library books and and other, other materials.
So moved.
The second.
So Nancy made a motion, Jean seconded, I guess, so be a Buffy please.
Yep.
Off the vote.
Yep, Dirks, I. Fleckner?
I.
Roach?
I.
Secor?
I.
Siegel and Teal are not here. Cook?
I.
Isleton?
I.
Kerpinske?
I.
Patton?
I.
Roberts?
I.
Wimberg and Zegowitz are not here. 9, 0, 0.
Thank you. So now what, we go back to the top again, or are we?
Yes, maybe now Jennifer can provide her project update and remind everyone about, you know, the critical schedule coming up. So while we still have everyone on the line here.
Ellen, can I just interject? This is Kristen Lass. So I know there's also a vote on the amendment to the CHA contract that we hope to go to the select board on Tuesday evening.
Actually, we, we aren't able to continue with number four because that document is not ready yet. So that will have to come back in front of this group probably on the March 31st agenda.
Okay, thank you for the.
Okay, I'm sorry, we, at the time that we posted, we thought it was still possible.
Yeah, I thought Mike had some outstanding questions with council, so thank you for clarifying that. I just wanted people to jump off to know that that was happening as well.
Right. Your votes for the evening, except for the adjournment, should be concluded now.
I'll vote to adjourn whenever you want. Okay, okay, so I guess we'll go back to the OPM report then.
Thank you. So the most important piece, I'd like to just reiterate a few key schedule dates because there is a lot happening that relate to openings of bids and future approvals that we will need from everyone in this group. So tonight is our joint committee meeting. On Thursday this week, on the 20th, we open the general contractor bids. After this, I'm going to speak a little bit about the filed sub bids on this, but we opened the bids this Thursday on the 20th, and we will be performing the review after those are complete for all of the statutory requirements. And in addition, Kristin Lass, Mike Edwards, Ellen, Rainville, myself, we have meetings set up to perform review of those bids with the, then after that, on the 25th, we have a select board meeting. We're seeking approval of the moving contract that we just voted on, that you just voted on. On the 31st, Monday, the 31st, we have another joint committee meeting, and we will be seeking approval of the general contractor lower bit, lowest bid on that. With then the April 8th, select board meeting, we would be seeking approval from them for the moving forward and engaging a contract with the general contractor. The library closes on March 31st and is closed through April 21st. And April 22nd is the first day of our temporary library being open. And if everything moves forward as we've outlined in the schedule above, the first potential possible day for the GC to be under contract would be April 14th, but I want to caution that that would involve a lot of alignments happening and that the contract signing would, would need to happen rather quickly. To that end, we have been working with Kristin and Mike to line up review of a lot of different material and preparation for the construction contract and also to line up town council so that they're ready to review the contract and assist with that engagement. Since our meeting on the third, we have opened the filed sub bids, we have opened the professional moving service bids. We continue work on the temporary library, which has recently included walkthroughs with the local building commissioner, the fire department, and the landlord. And we have been working through finalizing of the builder's risk insurance and, as I mentioned, contract preparations. The. There's two other topics I wanted to mention. One is on the filed sub bid results. You were all forwarded an email from Ellen about the summary of that. I'm happy to answer any questions, but at this point in time, the latest updates since that email is that we did review all of those bids for statutory requirements and all of, we were able to accept all of those bids. So right now, those would be moving forward towards the general contractor bid. And as we noted in that, those bids were under our construction cost estimate for that. Scott, you had asked about the bid results coming in. I think also, just in general, what we're hoping is that numbers are coming in in our favor because the market is a bit hungry right now. And we also believe that may have had part of the professional moving services bid why there was some low bids on that. I'm going to pause there if there was any questions on the filed sub bids because that was a pretty significant item for us.
Jean?
I just want to commend the, the design team and OPM for getting that many bidders. That is fabulous. And getting that low of a, you know, saving $2 million, as long as the generals come in in a similar low fashion, we'll be doing really well. But having, I mean, you've got seven bidders, six bidders for most of your, of your, you know, so there was a lot of outreach, I'm sure, from CHA to get that many bidders.
We, we are very happy with that. We did get a total of 75 filed sub bids, and we even got an elevator bid, which we were not expecting because of the challenge with that trade right now. But we are, yeah, we're, we're very pleased with the results. And I think it is not, it doesn't tell us what the general contractor bids are, but it is a good signal to that. So I think we're incredibly hopeful for opening the bids this week.
That's one of the question, I mean, all these bids are subject to, I presume, some conditions that they, that they explicitly say that they are, you know, pre-tariff bids, so if we were to have a increase in the cost of any, any odd component, they can adjust accordingly?
So we actually had to delay our bid for two days because the day that we had to, our deadline for publishing any addendum was the day that the tariffs became active. So we actually did have to publish an addendum to delay the bids so that we could work with, with Kristin and Mike from the town manager's office as well as town council to go through this, and we did respond about tariffs because of bidding RFI came in. And so we, we answered that tariff question with.
Jennifer, I was just going to add, add to it because I was on the meeting too, Scott, if you know mine. So essentially what we did is put the onus on the subcontractor to do their diligence in price current market value and put it out in a such way that if you incur a cost, you have to substantiate, prove your cost and submit it as a change. So if a contractor feels that they bid a project with a value of a material at X and they've incurred a cost, now it's at Y, it's their responsibility to submit that to us via a change and substantiate that with backup to prove that they've actually incurred the cost. Not just necessarily, hey, I have cost as a tariff, you have to prove that. So they'd have to show a bid quote and show something along those lines to prove that they actually incurred the cost. And then at that point, we can consider it for approval. We felt it was best talking to council and talking amongst the team that we want the subcontractors to give us the most educated low bid they can. Falsely carrying potential tariffs wouldn't benefit anyone. We'd be paying a premium that we may not need to pay. We felt that it was best for us to keep the bids without the tariffs unless it's known. And like if there was one known today that was starting during construction, we put some language in there. But overall, it's really on them to carry the cost and then substantiate it if it changes.
We also included some language that if there was a tariff present on the day that things were bid and then the tariff went away, we actually also, we have language so that we can re address that issue and potentially receive a credit for that. So again, it's as Mike was mentioning, it, it's about the paperwork that we're going to require related to tariffs.
Thanks. I didn't want to take a lot of time, but that's just top of mind right now that we had 25% onto a cost for anything that can make a difference.
It, it absolutely did, and it was a, it was a challenging issue, and so with thanks to Michael Patton as well as Mike Edwards and Kristin Lass for all of us getting together with your council very last minute to address this matter.
I thought, do you have the hands being raised? No? It was me before I jumped in. Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
That is the overall summary, but there were two other items that I wanted to discuss and share information. I know we're right up against the timeline for some of you leaving, but two open issues from the last meeting we had. One was about the granite stone retention in the drawing sets. I believe Jean, you, you mentioned this issue. And so I wanted to confirm that without having to make any changes to the drawing set, we own carefully removing, salvaging, and storing 20 dressed stone blocks from one of the key walls of this area and that we would be, we don't have a specific location for the reuse of these, but with the intent that they can be reused in landscaping. So we already have that scope of these being retained and kept aside. And so we would have to address later on if they get moved offsite to another place in the town or potentially, and I think our hope is to use them in the landscaping of what we're doing. But we don't need to own any additional scope to salvage them or keep them on the site because we own that in the drawing scope right now.
Okay, we own 20.
20.
So I think the historic committee's issue was if there are more, is there the possibility of bringing them into the project? And I think that if, this is something that we should address once we get the bids in. If, for instance, there is, if the project's $2 million under budget, we may want to consider spending a little bit money, more money in that area. We may not, but, but I just want to, you know, give the benefit of doubt to the historic commission who requested it before they sent the very nice letter approving the project for ADA issues.
I think Mary Ann, you have a question about that?
I do, thank you. Is to Jean's point is say conversely is that we don't need all 20 or we're able to keep saying 25, 27, 30, whatever, and we don't use the ones. Is there an estimated cost for removal? And where do they go? And we would budget that as well.
We need to budget that removal of them on offsite. So that is something that we'd need to address. I think what we're, what we don't know is when these come out, we, we can see some of these blocks, so we have a, we're, we're feeling positive that these will be usable, but we can't guarantee that. So the condition, you know, hopefully we get more than 20, that could be something possible. But we, we would need to evaluate if we need to move these offsite where they would go and add the cost for that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I have one final item, which is that, and I can address this now if you'd like, but I can also hold off and send this out. But there was a request of, with the RFIs that we got during bidding to understand what those were. So I put together a really simple analysis. I have some charts that I could share so people could understand what we, what we were seeing. So I will share my screen. I believe you can see my screen here. So we have a total, we've received a total of 148 RFIs during bidding. However, we only answered 144 of them because of when they came in. Out of that 148, we've looked at even the ones that we did not answer, but would they have a potential cost impact? 113 did not, 30 were sort of a maybe, and yes was for, the tariff question was one that we said had a potential cost impact, for example. Out of the types of RFIs, and I can zoom in on this a little bit. Most of them were scope clarifications. Another almost equal amount was clarity on the trade bid separation. So confirm that the filed sub bidder owns this. There were a lot of questions of that nature. There were a number that were bidding process. So again, tariffs, we put under the bidding process because they were not about the scope. But and the one that's blanking here, I think might just be a mistake with my Excel chart. Sorry about that. And then out of the 144, 85% were unique and like, you know, 15% or so were duplicate questions from each other. So I, that's just a sort of really broad overview of how those all broke down. But we do have, all of them have been responded to through addendum, and they're all available on the bid docs website for anyone to see, or we will be collecting the addendum as packages when we're complete with bidding, and they will get folded into the conform set for the project. Any questions on this?
I think I was at seven. I'll pass the chair to Kristen and make myself relieved.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep, I'm gone. Good night.
Have a good meeting.
Good night, everyone. I'll stay online.
Thank you. So I believe that we're all done with OPM, so are we on to Ellen's report for our library director report?
Yes, so, so I'll be brief as well. The moving timeline is in your packet, although know that now that is being updated and changed daily. At this point, every piece of furniture we're moving is numbered by area, and it's also color coded by what suite in 515 Groton Road and what room it's going to be going to. As we talked with the low moving bidder, they're going to provide us color coded labels for packaging so that this color coding will follow through the entire moving process. We, we do have orders of conditions to meet before construction can begin. And so there is a request to town council for an opinion on the screening compliance of the pines in the site plan, and we're waiting for an opinion on that. As well in your packet, the support letters for the Mass Architectural Access Board submittal were sent to you, and that application is being handled by Fine Gold Alexander. So they will be following up with that, and that application will allow us hopefully to keep our front door as an open entrance, even though it would not be compliant, fully compliant with ADA. So as a historic entrance, which would be really compromised and reconfigured in order to be accessible via a very expensive ramp. The argument would be that we keep the historic entrance and be allowed to continue to use it, especially as the north entrance will always be the primary handicapped accessible entrance where handicap parking is and where someone can come in at grade level. So the big thing is our closure, we, we have a townwide postcard. So the big thing is our closure, we we have a townwide postcard ready to go out. We just needed tonight's vote and we need that submittal to the select board and we will get on the agenda preparation for next Tuesday night. So at this point, the library plans to be closed from March thirty first through Patriots Day, April twenty first. So that would be two weeks of moving all the collections and furnishings and historic holdings and one week at our temporary site to have training and safety walkthroughs and get up signage and exit signs and be sure that we're completely compliant and ready for our occupancy permit.
Super. Any questions for Ellen? Okay, none there. And Ellen, thank you for rearranging the agenda this evening to accommodate the other meeting. I believe we are done with section four approvals. Nothing to do this evening for additional services or costs approvals. All old business is taken care of. So we're on the new business timeline for construction contract.
Hey, quick question. Do we have to vote on the OPM's construction update? It just said vote on the agenda.
Well, that was for the contract.
That was for the moving bid. We we wanted to vote to accept that low bid and refer it on.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
The OPM contract update.
That was item number.
Is what we needed to vote on, but we're not doing that tonight.
It's not ready. We we hoped at the time of posting it would be ready, but.
That was Kristen's question. Okay, thank you.
Few last tweaks are taking place.
Thank you.
It's really, it's really an update. This group may not remember that it was signed for notice to proceed through pre qualification of bidders. So there's really not, it's it's just an update now of the parties that are involved in our project and a much more expanded explication of what services are performed under the construction phase. And and basically, it needs a resigning to take us through construction and close out. So so it's largely about of small amendment addenda really to original language.
Sorry, and thank you.
No, no, it's not. I'm I'm sure that none of us remembered that without looking at it. So maybe, I I mean, depending on the construction results, we'll know what kind of facilitation we need for the construction contract. Would you want to say more about that, Jennifer?
Yes, so this is, as I mentioned earlier, it's a very exciting week to be opening up bids. It's a huge milestone. So we anticipate that when the bids are come in, we'll do a similar leveling sheet that what you saw for the filed sub bids. And we'll be able to share some preliminary information with you all, very similar to the summary that you got before, while we perform the statutory review, which does take some additional time. But as I mentioned earlier, our intent for this is to make this approval where with fingers crossed that the bids come in below our budget, we should be able to just simply approve a low bidder if they meet all the qualifications for your meeting on the thirty first. And then it will go to the select board meeting on the eighth. And that would be our schedule for construction contract. If you recall, we did add four deduct alternates should the case happen that we are over budget. Then we would have some deduct alternates that we would have to take in the order of which they are numerically assigned. So you must take one before you can take two, three and four and so forth. So if it would happen that we would be over budget on the thirty first, we will also talk about deduct alternates. If we are not over budget, then the deduct alternate issue just simply goes away. And the other piece that we should be understanding better on the thirty first is when our target date for signing a notice to proceed with the contractor is. And for those of you who aren't aware, the notice to proceed is a critical date for this. The day that we engage them fully, we sign a notice to proceed and so many other requirements in our project schedule apply to that date. So we have assigned a project overall scheduled date tied to calendar days based on notice to proceed. And so that date is very key to our project, as well as some other requirements that they will start having to prepare and when they will seek their first payment and so forth, everything ties to that date. So those are all critical items coming up with, which are all tied to signing the construction contract. And we'll continue to outline that, but that your participation on the thirty first, that is our next scheduled meeting with you is important for that.
Okay, any questions?
So then we'll make the appeal again. For those of you that have institutional memory of past groundbreaking ceremonies, we want to be planning that as well. You know, we certainly want the select board invited, our legislators, our Board of Library Commissioners, building consultants, you know, someone, one of the commissioners themselves. You know, potentially finance committee members or capital committee members, you know, who have supported this project going back to twenty twelve. So we, you know, have a wonderful friends group that's eager to help with the celebratory part of it. But if anyone can help with, you know, reminders of our invite list and who we should absolutely be including and asking, offering a hard hat and a shovel, I would really appreciate that because it's not too soon for us to be thinking about that as well.
I would suggest our town moderator as well, since she handles so many large meetings, proving funds. Very good. I think we're at the end of our agenda, if I'm correct here. And as mentioned, our next gathering is on March thirty first, six thirty PM. And for that wonderful moment, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have Glenn and Mary Ann. Perfect. Very, oh, we need to do the Buffy vote.
Yep.
To confirm.
Just scribbling here. Okay. Okay, motion to adjourn. Derek's eye, Fleckner.
I.
Roach.
I.
C four.
Hi.
Seagull and Teal are not here. Cook is not here. Isleton is not here. Karpinski.
Hi.
Dutton.
Bye.
Roberts.
Hi.
Wimberg and Zagowitz are not here. So it is seven zero zero and we adjourned at seven eleven.
Super.
Right.
Much. Very efficient meeting.
Yeah.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Unefficient. I I hope.